It's ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is a regular Commissioners' Court meeting for County of Starr, Monday, February 25th. Let the record show that we do have quorum, everyone being present. And I'd like to welcome and thank all of you for being here this morning. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. Justice, I am the United States Attorney. I am the Republican for which you stand. One nation under God, indivisible,天地无疆, justice from.
Mr. Pettis, welcome aboard.
I believe everybody has a copy of the claims. At this time, it's all in order.
Motion, Judge. Motion, Judge. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next is the vendors list. Is that in order, Mr. Pettis?
Again, I believe you've got a copy of the vendors list. Everything is in order. We've recommended it.
Motion, Judge. Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Before we, you know, if it's okay with the court, I'd like to move to an item down. Let's see, who's from out of town that needs to come before the court at this time? You want to go? Okay. What's your line item? Do you know?
Fourteen.
Yes. Yeah, this is item fourteen. Please identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Bobby Villarreal with Estrada Inohosa. Let me pass on. Thank you, Judge, for allowing me to move up in the agenda. Again, my name is Bobby Villarreal. I'm municipal advisor represented with Estrada Inohosa, financial advisors. And just if you look at your packet there, Estrada Inohosa was founded in 1992 by Robert Estrada and Noe Inohosa, both natives of Brownsville. They were born and raised there. The firm specializes in municipal underwriting and in financial advisory services. The firm has grown considerably in the last 27 years. We have eight offices in five states. It's 100% employee-owned, minority business enterprise. Just so you know, the capacity of the firm, we did two, in 2018, we did 263 transactions totaling $27 billion. That ranks as second in the state of Texas and 12th in the country. And if you look at page nine and 10, it'll show a listing of some of our clients, big and small, and everything in between. And again, South Texas is a very special place for us. Like I said, the founders are natives. Myself, I'm a native of Falpurius. I live in McAllen. I office out of there. I have about 15 years of experience with Hidalgo County for the county judge and as Budget Control Officer, County Executive Director, and Economic Development. Worked on many projects such as the courthouse in Hidalgo County, drainage district. About $190 million is going out soon. And again, we represent most of the counties in South Texas, from Oasis to Webb to Cameron to Hidalgo, Brooks, Jim Wells. And in this county, we do represent the city of Rio Grande and also the school district and Roma City as well. But again, this proposal here today for you is just a proposal to see if you would like to engage our services. There is no cost to our services other than if you ever go out for an issuance of a bond, but it's no cost to you out, it's just wrapped within the issuance of the bond itself. And again, if we were to be engaged by the county, we would work with the staff and the commissioners and the judge to work on a CIP plan to address whatever issues you might have in the future, whether it's drainage streets or courthouse or the jail or your fleet for law enforcement. And again, what we do, we're a very highly regulated industry, and so we have a fiduciary duty to you. We have a duty of loyalty to you. We can't do anything to harm you. We have to do everything in your best interests. So a lot of that would be us seeking financing for you that would be at the lowest cost and most effective way to your, to you and your taxpayers. But with that, I guess I would, if you have any questions, please.
Yeah, just a little history. If you all recall, when Hollis was here, he said that we would be needing a financial planner at some point in the process. So Bobby called and I said, yeah, go ahead and come on by and present to us. Like he said, it doesn't cost us anything unless Hollis or whoever gets us a grant and we need to float bonds or he needs to tell us that we're financially stable enough to handle it. He's like our financial advisor. And they've done work for Starr County in the past and certainly, you know, very highly qualified company. So I don't know if you all have any questions for him.
Motion to approve, Judge. Estrada Inohosa asks County of Starr National Advisory.
Second motion to approve.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge. And again, I think Mari can find me. We're old high school classmates, so she can, if you guys have a problem, she'll yell at me.
Okay, well, hopefully, we'll need your services and we'll get some money that we can, we can use in the county.
Well, thank you, sir. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Item fifteen is also from out of town, and this is by Valley Telephone Co-op. Anyone here representing them? Okay. You want to go ahead and identify yourself for the record.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mario Spindola from Valley Telephone. I'm here in regards to proposing a upgrade of facilities in the area of San Julian Road. That's going to extend down south toward Munoz Road and to further gain some customers in the Aguad Verde, Tuna Street, and San Julian Street. So we're just here to upgrade facilities out there to, from copper to fiber optic services.
It looks like most of those are, they're within the city limits of Escuela de.
Okay.
I don't know what he's talking about, but you been to the city?
I've not.
You might want to stop by there.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, and we only came because of the San Julian Road, such a large, you know, road out there, and I think that's part of the county.
The county of everything else?
Yeah, it's part of the city. Yes, sir.
Well, again, as the Commissioner mentioned, if some of these areas are inside the city proper, of course, you need to get permission from them. We can grant.
Whatever's in the county.
Right, but we came for inside the city.
Sure, that's understandable. Yes, sir.
Okay.
What do we need? We need a.
We would need a motion.
I see what we are.
Moved in second to approve, under discussion. I think there's a feat to that. On offer utilities, we had exempt that.
For utilities?
It's exempt, okay. Okay, have motion in second. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Let's see, what else? I have an interlocal agreement for mental health services between border region and Starr County. Anyone here representing them? We had this before, didn't we? Your call for, last meeting? No? Do you know what that's about?
It's scary, so it's, I recall.
Yeah, we tabled it because there was no one here. Who brought it? Huh?
I think the email was.
Okay. I think it should be tabled until we get some explanation for it.
Move in second.
Moved in second to table, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item 10 is to approve MASA Medical Transportation Solutions. Mr. Callahan, is he here? No.
No, for that transport of the helicopters?
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, we had tabled, yeah.
We couldn't do anything if there was, it was not on the agenda.
Right, yeah, so we.
We just don't introduce.
We were going to put it back, yeah.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Anyone else? Not, we'll go ahead and go to our regular agenda. Under item five, it's an action item, and this is to approve a resolution in support, to support the study by Texas Water Development Board and the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality as set forth by House Bill 990. It's in your packet. This is a resolution in support of a study that both agencies are doing in conjunction. I think it's something that's very worthwhile. You all have it in your packet.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve, under discussion. This was presented by Representative Roland Gutierrez, and this is to study the water quality on the US Mexican border. Any other question, comment? All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item six is a possible action item on criminal justice program for the year 2020 grant application. And this is by Mr. Canales. I don't see him here, but this is pretty much standard grants that they ask for.
Move in second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Item seven, also an action item, and this is about in same line, this is a grant to buy armor, for body armor for his law enforcement.
Move in second.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye. Oppose? Motion carries. And item eight is authorizing resolutions for CJD 2019 Grant 3765401 and 3765601. These are first-time grants.
For what?
I don't know what those grants are for.
What it do with the.
I'm sorry? Let me, let me see if he's got something here about what.
That's the one that they're trying to hire in the attorney or?
No, that one was, well, let me check before I. Okay, it seems like the first one, the first resolution is for the armor, body armor. That's for the special crime unit. And then the second resolution seems to be, also for the special crime unit. I guess they're just asking permission to apply for these grants.
Move in second.
Okay. Vic, what we were talking about, where the two grants, we've already approved the two grants, the resolution is for those two grants?
Yes, could I expand on that?
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. These two grants, what they are, it reads on the language of the agenda, is we're asking to apply for body armor grant, for body armor. What we have is when we have incursions into raids, currently, the SEU has basically the regular bulletproof vests, which will stop a small caliber handgun, but if you're talking about a large caliber rifle, semi-automatic weapon that's a gun, a rifle type, it won't stop it. They're going in there pretty much without anything, if you really want to get to it. The bulletproof vests cover the vital organs in the chest and the stomach, and that's it. Their shoulders, arms, legs, waist are all exposed. This body armor is designed for SWAT, and that's what we would like to see purchase it for the SEU, for the four members. Additionally, the ballistic helmets, they're going in there without anything on their heads as well. Headshot will basically wipe out an agent, so we're looking for ballistic helmets. Radios to have for the units, they are extremely expensive, you're talking upwards of $8,000 for a unit. And we're also looking for, one other thing, off the top of my head, I can't recall. But that's what we're looking for, Judge, in these grants, and they're 100% grants. There is absolutely nothing that the county would be paying for. It's 100% free, and no Commissioner Garcia likes that. There won't be any cost to the county if we are awarded them.
Well, you got plenty on the, on the budget we approved.
Well, my budget's very, very.
Four hundred thousand, you also.
Oh, that's a whole different grant, Commissioner. That grant I would not be able to use here at all. That's for, for.
You got plenty of.
No, I would love to have that money for this, but we wouldn't be able to.
Okay, so the item eight, that's authorizing the resolutions is for those grants?
That is correct, Judge, and it would just be the.
Or you're applying for the grant.
We're applying for the grant, and the resolution is that we are applying for the grant.
Yeah, the six and seven were the ones we approved, which is to apply for the grant, and now they're asking for a resolution.
And the third one is for what?
It's just to resolve and to show that we are approved by the court to apply for the grants.
Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners, Judge.
Item nine is a preliminary approval for Los Rancho de la Estrella Phase Three. Mr. Garcia.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. I'd like to present the Los Rancho de la Estrella Phase Three. It's adjacent to Phase Two. It's on Commissioner Alvarez's precinct, and it's adjacent, like I said, to Phase Two, and it's for preliminary.
Move, we approve preliminary. Moved in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 11 is an action item requested by Mr. Humberto Gonzalez Jr. to no longer accept cash for transactions at the clerk's office.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Basically, what we're asking is just that we're one of the few offices in the county that still accepts cash, so we want to phase it out to have a little bit more efficiency and we have more accountability. Presently, right now, we take cash at our office here at the courthouse and at the annex for birth certificates and marriage licenses and copies and so forth. We're going to eliminate that. We're going to give the community and our constituents enough time. We want to phase this out and implement it starting April 1st. Our credit card machines at both offices are working and up to par, so we'd like for the Commissioners' Court to approve for us to stop collecting cash. Yes, sir.
Let's just, somebody will file saying one document there. How much would it cost for somebody to just file a document, a deed with two pages?
$26, Commissioner, for the document, and $4 for each additional page. So it's, it's, it's $26 to file a deed. I mean, where they're going to spend the least amount of money is when they go for a copy. They want a copy, let's say, of a deed, it's going to be a dollar. I mean, they're going to have to bring us in a money order.
That's what I'm, they say it costs a dollar. How much are they going to charge him to use the card?
3%. That's what the county, I believe, charges.
3%?
Yes, sir. I mean, I think, I think that's what the county offers.
And just to clarify that, the county does not make that 3%.
I understand that. No, I under, that's what I'm getting at. I thought it was $3 for every transaction.
No.
Why, 3% is a problem.
3%.
But if you know, the company will cost you a dollar, and you're going to charge 3, why do you pay them? Only 3%?
Yeah, it's 3%, and we're asking Lone Star National Bank to help us out, where it's already implemented, and our clerks are having to go and manually put it in there, but hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we can get it to where it's already, as soon as they swipe the card, it's already going to be charged in there. Should, there way shouldn't be any problems. But it's more for efficiency and accountability, Judge, that we were not back and forth with cash and stuff like that and make it a little bit easier.
I commend you for that, Mr. Gonzalez. I think it's a certainly step in the right direction, you know. Money is very tempting, so.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 13 is an action item, and this is to approve the reappointment of Ricardo Gutierrez to the Rio Grande Valley Water Authority Board.
Move in second, Judge.
Moved in second. All in favor, please aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Item 16 and 17 are budget corrections from the forfeiture funds for our DA.
Motion to approve, Judge.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Items 18 through 26 are budget amendments. Mr. Pettis, are they in order?
Move in second, Judge.
Have a motion in second to approve, discussion. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. I'm sorry, through 26, right? Item 27 is possible action on the tax abatement proposals from Hidalgo Wind Farm, Delta Liability Company. Anyone here representing them? I think 27 and 28 are both, one's the road use agreement and the other one is a tax abatement.
Correct, correct. Yeah, good morning. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. My name's Rourke Peterson. I'm the Director of Development in Central Region for EDP Renewables North America. We're the developer-owner and would be the operator of the Hidalgo II Wind Farm, the expansion that we're planning for development here in Starr County. Want to thank the county judge and commissioners for working with us on this project. Of course, Rose Benavides as well, who I think is running a few minutes behind this morning with the Industrial Foundation, has been critical in working with us on this effort as well. We're very excited to bring additional investment to the county through this expansion of our existing wind farm, a portion of which is already in the county. This would be 14 turbines plus accessory roads and underground collection system associated with the wind farm expansion. The Chapter 312 agreement is critical to the economics of our project, and assuming everything falls into place, we get all the final approvals and everything lined up, we should hopefully begin construction on this project here in the spring.
That's the one here on, on, on.
Yes, yes.
Okay, I have a motion in second to approve. The.
If we have the agreement, there is.
That's what I was going to ask for. Rose was just calling me on the phone, I think it's pertaining to this. Have you worked through this, the abatement and all that with Rose? Have you all come to an agreement?
Yes, we have.
Okay, and the abatement would be what, 75?
75% for 10 years.
Okay, and the road use agreement is that you maintain them and you keep them back in the same condition or better than you find them?
Correct. Now, in matter of the road use agreement today, we would ask that we table that item today, as we identified last week, the agreement that we had drafted and had contemplated included provisions to allow for driveways and crossing of the county right-ofways with our infrastructure. But it appears our team's been working separately with the county on permits handling those items, and so we'll need to revise the agreement a bit to remove the driveways and the right-ofway crossings from that agreement to then only contemplate maintenance and improvement of the county road we plan on using, and hopefully, we'll revisit that item at a later date.
Okay.
Table 28?
Yeah, so I guess the motion, if it's to approve 27 and table 28, is that correct? Okay, okay. All in favor, please aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 29 is a possible action on tax abatement agreement between GIAPEC 2 and one, or is this the same one?
No.
Different one?
One is different front on.
Oh, okay.
Judge, that one we actually have to go into, into executive session before that item.
Okay, so we'll discuss that one when we come back out.
Yes.
Okay, I think I've covered pretty much everything tonight. Okay, so it is 10:25 in pursuit to Section 551.074 and 551.087. We will now go into executive session to discuss order of salaries and the purpose of deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. We'll be out shortening. It's 11:18, and we're back in open session. I guess let's go back to item 29.
29.
Yeah, and this is discuss and take action on tax abatement agreement. I guess I'll entertain a motion to approve the abatement as discussed in the executive session.
Judge, I would like to make a motion to approve abatement as discussed in executive session, Judge.
Moved in second, discussion. All in favor, please aye. Bill, you wanted to talk about the wall? And this is information on only, it's not an attend item.
Okay, thank you, Judge, Commissioners. As I was telling you, we were contacted right after we closed the property last year, and the wall was coming through the property, so we've had everybody out from the Corps and Border Patrol, and as you know, we've already built our own levee wall, which we're putting our facility behind, so we don't make a large investment, have a 100-year flood come and cause us a problem. Behind our levee wall, we have an 18-foot road, which can be used for a lot of different things. So we suggested this, not only to the Corps, Border Patrol loves the idea, our neighbors have all looked at it, they're, some of them have been fighting for 13 years now to not have the wall go through their property. They've said to me, if this is what we're going to get, 150-foot back from the river, we like the idea, you know, we're in. So just my suggestion, if some, you know, we've got something to show that is built, regardless how you look at it, you know, you're taking a lemon, turning it into lemonade, I mean, this is something that benefits everybody in the county. You have visitors coming from 17 different countries just for the birding. If they can walk along, look out at the river, look at the birds, along coexisting with Border Patrol and other people in the community, it's a win-win for everybody. It's going to bring in people in hotels, restaurants, so on and so forth, spending money in the county for years to come. So it's just a suggestion to go as a united front, instead of having a bollard wall go right through the middle of our properties is what the government wanted to do. It doesn't make any sense.
Let me, let me ask, do you mind or can, if some of the people that own property along the river, if they want to go and see what it looks like, can they get on your property to see the wall that you built?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to meet them there and show them what we're doing, give them a, give them a personal tour.
In case we get approached, you know, we can try and set up a meeting with you or your people.
Absolutely.
So that they can go look at it.
There, you know, the hardest part for the Corps has been getting their releases to come onto the property. I was specific when I gave them my release, it's for surveying only, and then I've had to give subsequent releases for environmental and other. I told them, you know, I'll let you come in and do this, but here's what we want to do. We will be the only contractor on the property, you're not going to bring other contractors in, so they've contacted me through each step. So it's coming, it's a lot of money. If it's directed in the right direction, I think it'll benefit the community for years to come, instead of just a steel wall that's going to be there, and, you know, there's controversy on both sides, but this is something that would benefit the community. Like I said, when I went to view the border originally, a couple of years ago, on a tour, people, the guys telling me, people are coming from all over the world to just see this wall. If they come here and see what's going on in the community, spend some money in restaurants, come look at. come look at the birds, which I had no idea what an amazing thing this was until I spent last summer on the property, I had falcons all over the place, all sorts of different things going on with wildlife, it was amazing. And I'm not a birder, but it was really cool. So I think if the property owners got together, went on a united front, it could be something that would benefit everybody, and it would, it would, you know, right now, they're getting easements or whatever, you know, here and there, that's our hardest thing to do. We come in and do the whole thing, here's how we want to see it done. I believe Laredo's making that same proposal. We've nicknamed it, you know, Border Walk, because that's what it is, you're walking along the border. It solves a lot of problems, flooding, the whole nine yards. Just a suggestion, love to show whoever wants to come take a look at it.
Yeah, I've been out there, it looks very nice.
If I can get an email, I'll send it.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. I did call for the vote on the abatement, right? I didn't? I had a...
We did a motion, a second, or we called a vote, and there will be a vote.
Did we? Yeah. Yeah, we already did, I called for a motion, a second, and a vote. Okay, item, the other thing we discussed was order of salaries, is there a motion to that?
Motion to approve, Your Honor.
Say the motion. Moved in second, discussion. All in fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries, and the economic development negotiation, it's already been approved. Anything else? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved in second, all in fair, please, aye? Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you.